Good to go.
Good.
Good evening. I'm going to call this work session to order. This is a work session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County Co-Chiefs, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 5:30 in Council Chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanita Hill, now here yet. Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Malsuwee.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Steven Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk. Jim Richardson, Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody. We don't do a lot of work sessions like felt with these two huge ordinance so that it would be wise for us to sit down and discuss them. So that's why I called this. I'm going to try to push this along to spend no more than 45 minutes on each one. So if I start to push a little bit, don't take them long. So with that, the first order of business will be discussion and possible direction of staff regarding amending of City Code Article 7.10, the light pollution, and Bisbee zoning code Article 3, 6, 7, and 9. This is better known as dark skies. This is a pretty comprehensive change in our light pollution code. City Manager Pocken, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to make a brief introduction and then I'm going to let our two experts field any questions that you may have. As you know, there is a dark sky ordinance on the city's books already. It was adopted several years ago. It is a good ordinance, but it still needs a little bit more work. I just want to emphasize two things that everyone I talk to worries about that I've assured them that we understand. The first thing that I tell people when they ask me about this ordinance is that we are not out to take your lights. Okay? We just aren't. Okay? The second thing that people worry about that we've talked about a lot is who's the polluter? And the number one polluter of the skies in the city of Bisbee is the city of Bisbee. Okay? Much of what we deal with when it comes to light pollution has to do with making the lights effective yet not wasted. And to this day, and despite the assurances of certain public utilities that work in Arizona and provide streetlights that you all, quite frankly, do not do the job the way the job used to be done in order to be effective and not allow for light pollution, which light pollution is what you see when you stand out in your backyard. It's that simple. Okay? Now, I have to live in San Jose area, so I see light pollution warrant. I see light pollution in Nacoa. I see light pollution in Hope, Bisbee. I see light pollution in Yanana. Okay? It's there. I see light pollution at the board patrol station, especially the new board patrol station. Unfortunately, this ordinance does not cover state or local or state or federal institutions, although I wish it did. So what these two gentlemen have done have refined the ordinance a little bit in accordance with the International Dark Skies Association recommended ordinance. We've been actually working on this thing back and forth between Bruce and staff virtually since I came back to work. We also had involved the city attorney in the process. We involved the city's building inspector in the process. And it has been through the review of the planning and zoning commission was recommended by them unanimously for your consideration. So with that, I don't want to take up too much time with that. I would like to, and I think most of you already know Bruce Saret. Bruce has been working on this for a lot longer than I've been around. And I'm just going to let you all take over at this point. You can make a brief presentation or let them ask you questions.
Okay.
I think you already know that there's several questions out there.
Okay. For the record, I think most of you know me. My name is Bruce Saret. I'm with the Bisbee Dark Skies Initiative. And we made a run at these ordinances back in 2019. And they passed the city council unanimously. But the thing that they had before, the previous city attorney had, I guess he was looking out for, thought he was looking out for the city, taught them not so bad that they lost a lot of their effectiveness. And so we're bringing some new ones before you, like Steve said, has already been run by the city attorney and the city building inspector and also the planning commission two weeks ago looked at these ordinances. We had a session pretty much like this where they could ask technical questions and those kind of things. And once they were satisfied with what we had to say, they passed these ordinances unanimously from the planning commission and recommended me to you. So now we're coming up to, I'm running from the assumption that everybody is having a chance to look at some of these things and review them. And so unless we have any further review, we can go straight to questions that you may have about the process.
Thank you, Bruce. So we just, just let me know. I'm going to try to just go through the sections and see if anybody has questions. Just stop me. I may not see you. Hey, Mayor. Just grab my, so I'll give you the... So I'll just start off. The purpose is pretty straightforward, it seems like. We get to the definitions and I'll be honest, for me to read you through the definitions and my father was a physics teacher, but I have to admit, some of this is beyond me and I don't know what, how the general public is going to take the word nadie, which I looked up and found out is a point of celestial sphere directly below an observer. This is on section D. That's a tough word to understand, to me.
Not everybody can do that.
Only you guys have looked through these terms course. Is there, does anybody else ever heard of that word?
Yeah.
You have? Good for you. Well, you're a science teacher. Damn it. Anyway, I don't know if there's some word that would make more sense to the common person than that.
Basically, I think some of that stuff was changed to make it more specific. Like if it did have to be enforced, I was having a conversation with the city building inspector and he said he could easily run into the same thing, like if we had a sound ordinance that limited decibels. And when he goes out there, like somebody's complaining about, oh, they make so much noise. If he's got a machine that can go out and record decibel levels and takes the guy to court or something like that, his attorney is going to be saying, when's the last time you calibrated your machine? And all these other things, all these other issues. And the ordinance on light trespassing, I should go to that first, has been on our city's books for years. That came way before I was here about light trespass. And if somebody's having issues with that, they can file a complaint with the city building inspector and then he has to go out and do it. But he runs into the same problem of how much light is trespassing and all these other things. And so they just redid the definition, so it's much easier to enforce. And I was curious about how much of a problem this was for the building inspector here. And he can hear, tell you himself, but I'm asking how many times a year, since this has been on the books long before I came along, how many times a year does he, is he called upon to go out and enforce light trespassing? And he said realistically, like twice a year. That's what's going on now. This law's been on the books.
But again, I'm addressing one word here, not the whole idea of how we're going to enforce it. So could you just address that one word? If everybody's comfortable about that word, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay. Nowhere yet a good time to introduce John Maritain, who is our technical expert here, who's been working with the city attorney and Steve and the building inspector on working out those problems ahead of time. We'll, I'll turn the mission, I'll turn the session over to John.
Thank you. John Maritain, Dark Sky Consulting, for the record. I get it, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely do. It's not familiar word. Where we have suggested these updates to the definitions, we're trying to bring them in line with definitions of organizations like the Limiting Light Insurance Society, which is the country's professional society for people who do lighting. They publish some definitions that they recommend. To clear up the issue with nadar, and I wish I brought my props with me. If you could imagine me dropping a full light, only points to nadar, points to some of you. So the idea here is I took your existing definition of full and shielded, which was a little bit loose. And I'm trying to be more specific as to what we mean for exactly the reasons that Bruce suggested. So that if there's ever any question about this, you would have enough specificity that somebody with a little bit of a technical background could understand what the definition is.
So my suggestion would be under the definitions that we add a definition to it. So that...
Sure. Sure.
So that would be one of the suggestions I would ask that is the updated, so that people that read this and then say, well, what's a nadar? And then in all these definitions, there will be a definition saying straight down to the point of, you know, however we want, however that should be called. To me, that would make me more comfortable knowing that the normal person reading this, or me, would understand what it's, what that, I understand what the angle of the prose, we have a, there's an illustration. That looks good. But then we have to know that that's basically what we straight down. So anyway.
Sure. We would not be interested.
Okay. No, go ahead.
So I do have a question and it has, it comes under permanent exemptions where it's under G. It says seasonal vibrations that exceed lumen cap. Section 7.1012 shall be permitted. And illuminated displays shall be extinguished between 1:00 AM and 1 hour before sunrise. So a lumen cap, so that's in section 710, right? 2712. I'm just curious, what does a, how much is like a string of Christmas lights? Is that going to exceed that lumen cap? Because, you know, we talked about having a Christmas string on the traffic circle and someone suggested, why don't we do a flagpole and have strings of light instead of this huge, you know, garden ant one? Is that going to exceed that? Because then it kind of defeats the purpose. Can you put it to you?
Right. No, Councilmember Giacamino, that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up. That came up at the planning commission last month. And we wanted to make clear that we're, we're not the enemies of Christmas. We're thinking about the, in the old part of town, where just the strands of light that are across the streets for ambience, those individually, those lights, to just give you a ballpark estimate, 10 lumens or less. So to get up to the thousands of lumens that we have on a acre would be vastly more lights than you.
National Lampoon of Christmas.
Yeah, exactly. And I think we can all, we would all agree that nobody really wants the very, the really garish displays. Nobody's after that. So the short answer to your question is I can't imagine a situation where you would, even if you added up all of them, that you would get close to the limit.
Oh, thank you very much for that, sir.
I'm just trying to stay by section right now. It's a very definition. It's okay. It kind of is hard to lumens. So if you look at the new K, which is the definition of lumen, it's in this. It says, as provided in section 71015. There is no section 71015. That's been deleted, I believe.
You should fix that, yes. That's in the existing code and we would just, we would strike that because we're going to strike 15.
Okay. So if you would make, I'm making all these notes for... City Clerk, clerk over there. So definite, so that's what I thought was, there is no section 715. All right. Anything else on definitions? Moving on to 7103, this is the new use of buildings and modifications. Anybody have any questions in this section? I do have one, which is under D, okay? This is the mitigation of legal non-conforming installations. It gives a 10-year period, which seems reasonable and seems correct. But when, I don't want to jump out of, but when we go to 71018, it has a five-year on utilities. So why do we have a five-year on utilities and 10-year on everything else? Is utilities treated differently somehow?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The utilities are treated somewhat differently publicly owned lighting. And this is for the benefit of, if Bisbee goes for the certification by the International Dark Sky Association, there's a window of five years in which all of the public lighting has to be brought into compliance with the code. The IDA's point of view is that the municipality should be the example. So the compromise here to deal with the property owners is to give them longer to comply. So that 7.10.3B, the mitigation of legal non-conforming installations, so that's one of the line items that is required by IDA. I try to make that distinction with the italics versus the plain face throughout the document. So that one addresses directly one of the IDA requirements. And again, part of the background of how we got to this version of the text was starting with all of the IDA requirements, writing them in, adapting your existing code to address that, to make sure that if you pass this, that box will be checked for the IDA certification if you decide to go for it.
I'll, I'll bring up my problems with the five-year when we get there. Because it's all budgetary to me.
Yes.
That's which one question I'll have for everybody when we get there. But I just wanted a definition of why one is 10 and one is 10.
Sure. That's a good question.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, under light trespass, this is another one that is pretty, again, maybe it has to meet what you're saying the code is for dark skies. But it says, shall not be installed or operated on any property whose lamp or light source is directly visible from any other property. I do live in Bisbee. I can guarantee you, people above me, on the side of me, and below me will be able to see my light no matter what. So I don't know how, how we're going to deal with this section because everybody would be...
Everybody knows that. Near further.
Sure.
I live on Spring Canyon.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I live in Spring Canyon and my neighbor is like 15 feet wide above me.
Right.
And he has non-conforming lights. And I sit out in my backyard, which is free of lights and everything, and enjoy the night sky and those kind of things. And if he turns on those lights, it blocks out everything. Because basically you have the fixture and the bulb extends way below the fixture. So anytime they turn them on, it goes out to the side. On the property line is his deck that is four feet wide. And ideally, what he wants to do is light up that four feet so he can walk out there and be safe and around. But he doesn't need that light shooting on all over. So this is part of a larger thing that I discussed with Joe Ward, that quite often with these issues, it's more of an educational issue than an enforcement issue. And so I would talk to him and talking about how, you know, a shielded light is where the outside of the fixture extends past the light bulb and basically focuses the light down instead of going out all over. And so I'm working with him now and they're doing it on a larger basis here. When I was talking with the building inspector, when he does get these calls on light trespass, since we determined that quite often this is more of an educational issue than an enforcement issue, my organization volunteered to, if he gets a complaint, to go out and speak with these people and try and educate them on what's going on. And if they don't want to hear anything that we have to say, then I can turn it over to the building inspector. But we figured nine times out of 10, if this is presented correctly to them, they can solve the problem themselves just by changing the light fixture.
Okay, yes. I just hate passing something that I know somebody's going to hold us to, that there's no way you can come in compliance of not seeing your neighbor's light when you're in old business.
But there's an issue between seeing the light and what this says. And it says, whose lamp or light source is directly visible. So if the actual bulb, if the lamp, that lamp or that bulb or that light source is directly visible. Now, if it's shielded and you're still seeing light from it, that's not a violation. It's the source.
Right.
So it's specifically limited to the lamp or light source being directly visible. So if you have a light and it's got shielding and you can't see the bulb, but you can still see the light coming from the fixture, that's not a violation. That's not a trespass.
Now, I just look at the, this, and you're telling me that if he meets this code with the little nadar, okay, on that four foot, you will never see his bulb. Is that all right?
Okay. If it's done correctly, recently in some emails that went back and forth between the city people, somebody took a light, a picture of Bisbee at night and were wondering, what are we going to do about all these lights? And the thing is, we almost have to do nothing about these lights. Bisbee is already 95% compliant. I think I've handed out my business card to various people before. Bisbee Dark Skies, our motto is, let's keep what we have. 90% of these, 95% of these ordinances affect future commercial development.
Yeah. Well, all I'm, I just worry about passing something that people are going to go to and say, you need to enforce. And then if it's, if you can't see the bulb, if there's shielding that will allow that to happen on Bisbee.
It's basically just changing the light fixture.
Yeah, well, I realize that. Fully shielded or whatever, but I just, as close as we are to neighbors, that seems like, but I'm...
It is.
That's why I'm questioning this.
My house is a prime example of that. My neighbor is right above me.
Yeah. Okay. Questions?
Can we ask? I mean, I'm not going to go into the technical, but I have a lot of questions about this. So can I start now?
Well, I'm trying to kind of get through sections.
Exactly. That's why, because like he just said, and I want to, Bisbee is like 95% compliant. I would like to hear, and I wasn't here when this supposedly passed. And we've talked, I mean, you know, about this. I don't have an issue with this. But Bisbee is not such a big city. We don't have all these commercial buildings. We don't have all these commercial properties. We don't have all these huge buildings. And now I would like to hear, and I've not seen it in this presentation, maybe this will come later on, what are the benefits versus the cost? Because the mayor just said, we will go into the cost later. So we would like to hear this. Is it such a big problem that we are going to invest? Who's going to pay for this? This is what I would like to hear. If it's not a problem, when you say 95% is in compliance, then why are we, are we? I mean, I don't want to have Joe become like a dictatorship here to go and check everybody's light and your light is just, I don't know how effective this will be and if it will be, if this is going to be enforced. So we have to be realistic. Bisbee, all Bisbee, you can hardly have any new building built in because of the codes and the various restrictions we have. So what are we doing this for? And how much is it going to cost us? Are you going to give us the money? Are we getting the money somewhere else? Or the taxpayer will have to shove this out this month? I'd like clarity on this.
Okay. On the specifics about lighting on individual homes, as the building inspector told me, anything that is installed now and it was installed legally is grandfathered in.
Okay.
Okay. So nobody has to run out and change their light bulbs right away. I think in terms of the commercial operations around here, just like anytime somebody buys a business or opens up a business here, whether it's a restaurant or whatever, the building inspector has to come in and check for, you know, proper lighting inside the building and things like that. And this would also make the lighting on the outside subject to this inspection also. And like I said before, this whole issue other, it wouldn't even be in the corrections here if we would have just gone with the previous destination. The light trespass issue ordinance has been on the books for years here in Bisbee. Anybody could have made a complaint to the building inspector and he would have to go out and check this out. And that's why I was curious how much, how often this actually happened. On my website for Bisbee Dark Skies, I have a frequently asked questions. And number four is somebody, my neighbor's light shines right into my yard. Can you help us with this? And right there, I tell them, no, this is already covered in the city codes of Bisbee. If you think it's enough of a problem to your house, you can file a complaint with the city building inspector and then he will come out and check it out. We can do that. But like I said, Ben, so this has been on the books for years. And he said realistically, he, this happens twice a year.
Just in response to our city manager that said earlier, we are the biggest, the city of Bisbee is the biggest offender that has the issue. And, and we would, I would like, and I think the rest of the citizens here would like to hear, if we have to go back and change all the light bulbs. I'm assuming you're talking about the city lights and is this, okay?
Go ahead. If we're done with the light trespass issue, unless anything else, originally when I talked about this, I said, I didn't think this would pass the city council if it cost us any money at all. Okay? If, we don't have a lot of money running around to go out and solve these problems.
Exactly.
And so when I started discussing some of these city lights issues with city manager Pocken, that he had some excellent ideas how we can change these lights and save the city money at the same time.
I'm going to get into that.
Okay.
I just wanted to get through some of our questions we would have. I mean, I'll be honest with you, just because we've only had two complaints up maybe a year now doesn't mean we won't have 25 next time if this is passed. So I don't necess, I don't want to pass something that causes more problems and additional situations. So I understand maybe we, people have no nets there. And so I'm just going to state that in that we're asking a question, I'm just making a statement.
I understand.
And you won't, I don't need a response. We need to move forward.
I understand. I wanted to reiterate what Steve mentioned earlier. We don't want to take anybody's lights away.
Right. But however you did say, well, if they're grandfathered in, they're grandfathered in. But they're only grandfathered in for 10 years. Everybody needs to realize, all their light fixtures will need to be changed within 10 years by this code. So, so just, just for everybody to know that, that's not, not a true statement where grandfathering usually means forever and it's not. We as the city would not, would only be grandfathering for five years for our city lights.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a brief comment. No light bulb lasts 10 years.
Right. The fixture may.
However, you're already able to buy light bulbs at B and E or Ace Hardware that are miles ahead of the light bulb snitch you probably have in your light fixture front door. You know, you have to, what you have to pay attention to is you have to pay attention to what produces the light and at what temperature it produces it. And so in most cases, and you know, I know, I know all the LED people say our light bulbs last 10 years. They have proven that to be yeah. And I've been buying them for years. But the right light bulb at, you know, hardware store prices can mitigate most of those issues at the point at which the bulb ends.
Except for the one where your neighbor's right above you and you can see the bulb.
That's right.
Even though you change the bulb, you'll see it.
Mayor, just because at this point on this, so basically if just a light bulb, that would not be an issue. But what we're talking about, the fixture and the way, the design of the fixture, because apparently from what the gentleman had discussed, is the fixture that they have issued. So when you say the light bulb, I feel right. Light bulb will can be changed and it'll probably be cheaper and the new light bulb will last longer. I'm aware of this. But the fixture, where we're going to have the problem, where the cost associations don't be. Am I correct in this?
If that becomes necessary to do, then yes.
Okay. No, just for clarity, I just...
You know, if you think about, if you've ever had to replace the light fixture at your front door or your back door, then it's not an overwhelming, expensive device.
No, it's the big ones.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the city. This is a...
Well, I mean, I was going to speak to that, but the mayor wanted...
We will get there. We'll get there.
Mayor wanted to move on. So don't let him, don't let him adjourn without asking that question.
Yeah. Please, no. One other quick, quick... Uh, one other quick, uh, quick, uh, thing for Ashley to take note of. Is under seven, ten, nine, which is the outdoor recreation athletic. On F, it says, specified item five above, there is no item one. So that's an incorrect, that's another, just, we'll have to correct that, it should be eating not five. Okay? Just, I better all right.
Okay.
And I did, I did my due diligence, I went down, my little highlighter, as you can see. All right, uh, you more on this one? Okay. Uh, I don't have any problems with much, and now we just have the total maximum outdoor light output, which is seven, ten, twelve, the new seven, ten, twelve. Uh, we talk about per acre, it's gonna be very, very hard in Bisbee to do. I don't know, very badly we'll even have.
Um, like I was talking about, future development, this is so we don't end up with, of course, it'd have to pass you guys, just so we don't end up with like, uh, Longley Auto Center at the parking lot at the bottom end of town, where the lights are on all night, shining on all the bright shiny new cars that you can lend in by. That is lights per acre, excuse me, lumens per acre.
Lumens.
And we have very few issues, uh, with that in Bisbee other than as city manager Hawkins said, like the border patrol place and things like that, then, but, but they don't fall under our regulations.
All right, uh, questions?
Just to this, cost versus benefit. So we have a new business that comes into town that will be, I'm a businessman. And I think about it from the, good business, good for the community, is gonna provide jobs and for his business, uh, his business necessitate some kind of lighting that to maybe have it look good. Are we gonna hear say, well, you cannot open this business unless you go and it, it, this is the, this is the question I have, the, the benefit versus, you know, the cost. So what do we do? We can say, we can't open your business?
Well, if I might, thank you, quick.
Yeah.
Okay. If you're gonna design a whole new business like this, to buy the lights that would work under our code would be no more expensive than buying the ones.
No, 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 it's not about the cost there, what I'm just saying, his business, there's certain companies, they have certain standard for their building. What that it's like, I'm just using it as an example. They expect certain lighting, just to reflect their brand, to reflect their image. How are we gonna deal with it? I'm not, yeah, I'm not talking about the cost, I'm, I'm talking about if it necessitate, that, that business has a certain style that may need more lighting. So where, where do we, where?
I'm, I'm with you, Mel.
Yes.
I've, over the last almost forty years of my career, not necessarily in Bisbee, uh, I've dealt with a lot of lighting, parking lots, retailers, shopping centers, all that stuff, okay? Um, if we have the code in place, they are ninety-nine point nine percent of the time happy to work within our code. Um, number one, uh, it's, it's easier for everybody. Uh, the easiest part of this is any new construction. Um, and, and, and also they're, they're gonna find that over the long term, they're actually gonna spend a lot less money lighting their facility than they would using, uh, the stuff that we prefer that they not use.
I, I agree with you.
It's all about, it's all about color temperature and type of fixture.
And I don't disagree with you, but certain businesses, and I'm just, just to, to bring it up, they, they, they require, and, and you know, you've been around, and you know, they require in the parking lot for safety reasons. I mean, this is, this issues, I mean, like I said, this be currently, I feel right, we don't have the problem. And I know this, I mean, it's, it's not. But, but we need to make sure, if I'm voting on this, I need to make sure this is clarified so it does not create problem for us in, in the future. Just cost versus benefit, we don't have such a big problem. I, I don't believe, you know, we're gonna have a, maybe a car dealership, I mean, I don't think that's happening. Uh, but we just have to, you know, and, you know, and I, I appreciate what the mayor tried to do at the beginning to clarify the, the wording on this, because some of it is like, you know, an acre, half an acre, it can be, it, it's clear. But I, we just, we just need to make sure, are we bringing this to Bisbee? Are we doing it? Uh, we're not such a big city, it's not such a big problem. I know you're trying to prevent it from the future, but we have to look at this and make sure we're doing it, making the right decision.
I might, I, there would be one advantage, and if we can meet this code and get certification, that actually, a lot of businesses like that.
As a dark sky destination, astrotourism is getting really big, especially in these.
So when you talk about cost versus effect, if Starbucks has a normal sign and they wouldn't meet this code, they'd probably more likely, we, we wouldn't be the first city they would have to do that in. So, uh, uh, to me, that, that would be the cost versus effect.
Cities over, all over Arizona have already done this. Flagstaff was the first, Sedona, uh, Verde Valley, Fort, uh, excuse me, Wachukah City is dark skies compliant.
Is dark.
Yeah, it is. They got a bunch of federal money because they're under the final approach to the airport of the DRCR district.
Okay, uh, we're like, we're running down, and I'm gonna get to the one big question here. Um, unless somebody has seasonal decorations, I know you asked a question on that. Um, they seem like they're permitted once they're extinguished, you know, uh, one AM or one hour, or to one hour before sunrise, that's, seems like.
But that's only if it's got off the way.
That's what?
It's only if it's got off the way.
Well, seasonal decorations should not exceed the, the lumens, they did, they should be extinguished.
Yeah.
So.
We went through this in the planning mission, there are some.
I'm gonna have to move on.
Okay.
I, I appreciate, but, and I'd like to spend more time, but we've got another one we gotta get to, so. Seven o'clock comes fast. Uh, my last thing would be the violations enforcement, this is the one, um, seven, ten, eighteen, which is non-compliant lighting shall be installed good faith by electric utilities shall be brought into harness with code within five years. Basically, this is, this is the city, and I know we, I looked it up, we spend ninety thousand dollars a year on, on, on our streetlights. That's what we put up, uh, we budget for every year. So what I wanna know is, in five years, from our city manager, how the idea is that we will change out the four, five, how many hundred lights we have?
Six hundred and something.
Yeah. And, and, and what, does the cost savings of lower energy and longer out, less maintenance? How, how have you done it before?
Um, well, good question, I've already done it before.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Um, the current situation, uh, in, in almost every APS served community, which includes us, is, um, we give up control over the maintenance and repair of our streetlights by, uh, having a streetlight, uh, maintenance contract with APS. We currently have one of those. Um, they charge us either two fifty or three fifty per light per month, uh, for each one. And that, uh, usually means that they're going to, unless there's some kind of incident that could create damage to a bulb like a truck running into or something like that, um, the, uh, the maximum that they're gonna do per year is fifteen to twenty luminaires will burn out, okay? Um, what we did in another city where I worked is, um, we examined the cost of that, uh, and I haven't calculated the cost here, uh, but it's gonna be similar because we have a similar number of streetlights. Uh, we were paying APS, um, approximately twenty thousand dollars a year to change a dozen or maybe two dozen of the outside, uh, light bulbs. And so, um, the council decided to, um, terminate that contract. Um, it's not totally without risk, but we terminated the contract. Um, we, um, purchased a vehicle that can get up to the streetlights, which we don't have to do here, we already have one of those, and, um, teach somebody how to replace the lights with night sky remnant lights. Uh, there were two options, we could either go through and change all six hundred lights at once at a fairly significant cost, or we could just replace those that burnt out and/or hit areas where you have a high traffic or a high visibility. So, um, in, in Rinslow, high visibility is over Route sixty-six, okay, from one of the town to the other. We went ahead and replaced all of those, um, with a filtered LED light with a color temperature of about twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred K. That is totally night sky compliant in a shoebox fixture. So we got the full shield, we had the right color temperature, and you had a long-lasting, um, low consumption, uh, luminaire. So that solved all of those problems. And then as lights would burn out around town, uh, what we would do is we would just take the hypersulfur sodium vapor lamp right off the bulb. Okay, you leave the mast arm right where it is. All you gotta do is unscrew it, slide it out, screw one in, uh, slip one in, screw it back up. Uh, the biggest problem we encountered with the APS on that was, uh, they're supposed to have a disconnect between the luminaire and the light, right? I mean, that makes so much sense that it would happen. Um, so there were times when we would have to wait for them to come out and install a disconnect so that we could effectively do that. Uh, the, the turnaround time on luminaires is roughly, uh, to change a luminaire is about fifteen minutes. We're not talking about the project. So, um, you could do that, you could do all of them once, or you could do those that burned out, or hit the high-traffic areas, or you could do something in between. Um, the, uh, at the same time, uh, say we did, so we did Route sixty-six, so we go back to, uh, the power company after Route sixty-six is relit, and they say, okay, here's the new lights, come out, and we calculate because they're not needed, as you know, uh, we pay a fee, uh, that they fix on it. Uh, the savings is roughly seventy percent of the old hypersulfur sodium vapor lamps. So, um, you know, now, did we terminate that contract without an argument?
Of course not.
It's money, okay? We're talking money here. But the twenty thousand dollars that I wasn't spending on APS, I could buy a truck with, get the truck ready to fix it, and use existing employees to actually affect the work. Now, we don't own every streetlight, okay? Um, some of them are owned by the power company, so that would be up to them to determine, but it's a handful. Boy, it's so much quieter to hear about that there. Um, and of course, as you know, the, the, the streetlights, uh, that go partway around the pit on Highway eighty, uh, there's still some question in my mind and I, and I know there is in many of your minds, uh, just who has the responsibility for those, but they are heard as well. So, um, it is, it is doable, and the benefits, of course, are cost. You're gonna reduce your power consumption about seventy percent. Uh, you're gonna put the right color temperature light out there, um, which someone with a lot more, uh, scientific knowledge than I, than I have can tell you all about the benefits of better, better sleep, uh, how it affects wildlife, and, and we all know we have wildlife. Um, you know, we got those hypersulfur sodium lights in Warren, so we got, um, all kinds of havelina out there. And I guess keeps them awake. So there you go. Um, that won't completely solve that problem, but it might make a difference. So there are, uh, health benefits to it as well. And, uh, so, yes, there is, there are, you know, tangible benefits and costs, but there are also intangible benefits, um, in general health and welfare of the populace and the animal life.
So what I'm hearing in the, in this five-year period that we should be changing all these, well, because we'll be spending money on new lights, it won't be a saving, but after five years, then our energy cost should go down considerably.
What I would recommend, Mayor, if, if you would choose to go that route, um, I would recommend, um, terminating the contract with APS at some not too distant future point. Uh, start taking it on as we see fit with money that we have that we can afford to use. Um, I also know that, uh, there is money out there that's competitive, of course, uh, that we can attempt to get, uh, that would maybe perhaps be enough to relight the entire city.
But in the end, our energy cost of ninety thousand would go down.
Yeah, I would say you're, you, okay, uh, you know, all things considered, because you will have maintenance costs, uh, you know, you, you will have, you know, hopefully if somebody knocks over a telephone pole, their insurance will take care of it, but not always, it seems like the ones without insurance. Uh, but it's a rare occurrence, and so, uh, your seventy thousand dol, or excuse me, your ninety thousand dollar current bill probably could end up somewhere in the vicinity of forty thousand or less.
The initial, I have a question on this. So the initial cost, uh, with the current poles we have now, the only thing we need to do would be just to change the light bulb? There's no other adjustment that has to be made?
The luminaire.
The luminaire. So there'll be costs associated.
Right, adding standard.
Yeah, just for that, yeah.
The ones that I'm familiar with, Mel, cost-wise, are, we're running at that time four hundred to four hundred fifty dollars per unit.
And if we do it as we go, like as the lights goes up, then it's like, we can spread the cost over, okay?
Yeah, I mean, and if you wanna make a, you know, if you wanna do a five-year deadline, we can, we can always time it over five years. So we're still not.
Spread it over five years.
We're still not doing it all at once, but we're doing it, um, methodically, if you will, uh, to get to your end point, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah.
All right, um, we're, the only last little thing I would want to note on this, under this violation seven, ten, eighteen, would be that, that there is a fine subject, not less than one hundred and not more than a thousand. I'm not sure how we define, would it be in our, our fee schedule? What, who gets a one hundred dollar fine, who gets a thousand dollar fine? How, it, this seems very ambiguous as far as amount, it should be for one violation, two, help me out there. Mister, yeah, you.
We would set that up in the, in the fee schedule to state. A hundred dollar fine for the first offense. It's under C. It would be a, a step typically like what we see with other ordinances. That's just, your, your initial violation is lower, but repeat violations. And you could also have a, a repeat violation within a specific timeframe because if someone's, you know, doing a violation once every three or four years, is it right to have it accumulated? Or if somebody's doing the same violation every few months, kind of thing? So typically, we, we have to look at either, you know, a, a violation, a, a first offense and a second offense violation within twelve to twenty-four months would be this. A third violation within twelve to twenty-four months would be this.
At last, that, that comes under C right here, where shall supersede, uh, the city council to adopt the new fee schedule. So if we're gonna adopt this, we should also adopt part of the fee schedule that goes with it, okay?
Just one more question, so the, you know, the people of Bisbee can hear this. So if you currently, if you have your lights grandfathered in, okay, how do, how do we ensure? I mean, how do we know what's grandfathered, what's not? But, you know, once we start, is, is our employees gonna go out and check every? I mean, it just have to be, there's some clarity in this, just because I know tomorrow morning, you know, I have a business, everybody's gonna come and be asking me those questions. And that's the reason I ask those questions. I ask the hard questions because I want some answers, because everybody does not understand it. As, as sometimes, because we have it in front of us, we read it, we know what's going on, but what the people are hearing, it may sound differently. So when we say grandfathered in, I mean, when does it start? When does it end? I can perpetually grandfather myself in for, forever, I mean.
Well, I'm, under this.
Yeah?
Just don't move and don't worry.
Under this, under this.
Yeah, no, because we said after ten years, uh, the mayor, they mentioned it, after ten years, everybody will have to switch. I just be clear, and I think this is what's important, we have to be upfront with this.
Okay, my efforts with Bisbee Dark Skies don't, doesn't end if we pass these ordinances. Basically, the rest of my effort is through public outreach. And we plan on having a booth at the farmer's market with visual, um, some excellent things where the, um, they have an excellent photograph of somebody's porch light, where somebody stand outside their door and the lights just glaring as you're walking up, like you're trying to see who it is. And then they have one that's focused right next to the guy, and it lights up everything on his porch that he wants without broadcasting that light all over the neighborhood.
I, I know, you came over and you showed me, and I appreciate that, I'm gonna be on this. My second question is, safety factor, because lights, you know, associate with safety. When you have light, you know what's going on. Has this been a problem in the past in cities? Have, has it, has there been a complaint when you don't have enough lights? You, you create some safety, so. You create some safety, some, uh, some consistency.
For, for about two weeks after you change light fixtures, people notice that it's a little bit different color than they're used to, because high-pressure sodium has a distinct color, and they've known that for a generation. And so, whatever you change it with is gonna change that color. And so, you'll get phone calls because people think something's wrong, or it doesn't look the same as it always did. And, uh, and then you'll explain it to them, they'll say, well, I liked it the old way, uh, but we can't repeat the old way, and, uh, and then it dies down after a few weeks. And, one final thought, Mayor?
Yeah?
Think below, not where.
Okay, any other follow-up? Because I'm gonna move along here, and I appreciate your time, and, and I would ask that, with these few changes, that we can bring this back for full consideration before mayor council, unless anybody has a question?
No, I just wanna make one comment, it kinda goes off the hook, he says, when you change out and you go into the dark sky, it takes away that nasty glare. It's not blinding, it softens it to where you even approaching your own home can tell the difference. You can still see, because it's lit, that you're not getting blinded by the light. Um, so, there are a lot of benefits. Personally, in, in a ten-year span, most people are upgrading anyway, most, not all. But, you know, most people are gonna do upgrades to their homes, so maybe it's gonna encourage them to think, you know, outside the box, okay, now that I'm upgrading, let's look at these, these things, they're gonna save you money.
Most of the complaints that I hear, people that are worried about changing their lights is the spares, and just being able to go up and downstairs at night and have an adequate amount of lighting to do that. And it's just a matter of changing the light around. These ordinances are already, I should say, in effect. The hospital just built a huge addition. All the architects know this is the future of lighting. Without having these ordinances on the books, the new hospital addition is entirely dark skies compliant. You can go by there, look at their streetlights on their parking lot, with how they lit their, um, walkways going into the buildings. Same thing, like, uh, the ball field, um, it's a limited field across from the high school down there. That's already dark skies compliant. They have small lights that light up the field as opposed to the ones at the Warren Ballpark, just go all over town and light that.
Thank you for that, and, uh, we'll, we'll-
I just wanna say, although I ask the hard questions, but thank you. I know you had a nice presentation, and the reason I asked you, so we, we know what's going on, and you going out to the farmer's market and explaining it, I think will be very helpful.
That's where we're gonna have things so people will know, if I'm gonna fix my house, why don't I do that?
Okay.
All right, then moving on to item number two now, this will be discussion of possible direction of staff regarding repealing, replacing city code article eight point nine, vacation minutes and short-term rentals. Uh, as you can see, this is an eleven-page change to how we consider short-term rentals. Um, again, uh, I'll open this up for discussion among council and any, uh, questions. I, I think they, maybe about to get convoluted, just kinda move through really fast if we can, and then if you have a, an issue on one of the sections, uh, just let me know. Um, start basically with definitions, I, does anybody have any? Seems like definitions are all pretty straightforward, I don't see anything, does anybody have a problem with the definitions?
I just have one.
On the definitions, okay?
Well, uh, maybe, uh, it will come later. The definition, when we say short, um, vacation rentals, uh, is, uh, I don't, is there specificity on the number of days? Uh, because I can, I can say, well, I'm a short-term, if, if someone comes in and wants to rent for a month, has, does that make it a regular rental or short-term rental? Uh, we have to be clear on the number of days and, and the time, and that's the one thing I did not see when I read through it. Uh, so, we have to define that, I think.
I think with ARS twenty forty-two, you know what that one is, uh, Joe?
Yeah, the, um-
Does it have a date, or?
I think it does.
I did not, I read through it, I may have missed it, that's why I asked. Uh, we, we need, we need to specify the number of days, what does constitute, yeah.
Did you, did you read the ARS?
I, I read through it, I was trying to look for this, and I did not see it, so I maybe-
I think it also comes under the, the TPT, because I know when we file our TPT on long terminals.
I went down, and I did not see it.
You know, residential versus commercial, so I think there is a designation within the TPT.
Yeah, just the speci- specificity of the number of days, what constitute a short? Because you have people that come here for a month, doing on business, and they stay for thirty days. Will that go under this, or, I mean, just, we really have to clarify the time. If, if it's here, that's fine, if it's not, then we need to make sure it's specified.
Okay, Joe, if you check on, see if the ARS specifies. I think what we did under accessory dwelling units, we said thirty days, that's what-
I, I, that's why I was trying to look for this, I didn't see it.
But it's one thing, I mean, if, if you have the, if you have the, the, the house or the facility available for rent for a one or two-day period of time, and somebody chooses to rent it for thirty days, it doesn't convert it from a short-term rental to a long-term rental.
No, but if they come in and say, okay, and, you know, I, I know, because I get people that come here, they are on a business for thirty days, and they're renting for thirty days, what would that be constituted? As a short, or as a regular rental?
It would be based off of what that house was classified as, because if that, if they normally rent it out for one or two days or a week at a time, that's a short-term rental. Just because somebody comes in and says, I wanna take this, I wanna take this room, even if it's at a hotel, I wanna take this room for, for, for a month or two months, it doesn't make that room no longer hotel.
We just have to clarify that, I mean, yeah, just, yeah.
So, what it is basically is if, if you're advertising and making it available for anything less than thirty days, then, then it becomes short-term rental. If you only advertise it as-
Thirty days.
Thirty days or more-
Then it's no longer a short-term. That, that's the, that's, that's it, if thirty days or more, that's the clarity on that.
But just because you rent one time for thirty days doesn't exempt you from this, because you're still a short-term rental person.
Okay, we just need to clarify, that's all, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, under the permit, uh, you know, this is requires a permit. Um, under that permit requirement, there's a physical address that must, uh, they must tell us where the physical address of those rental is. Um, they must name, their name, address, telephone number of the owner, and they also must give us a name, address, and telephone number of each designated owner, so if there's more than one, so that we now know who actually owns this, and what the address of the place is, and, and the address and telephone number of the people that own it.
And that's because a lot of times these are owned by-
Corporations.
Corporations, LLCs, partnerships, people go into these as economic reasons as opposed to somebody who says, oh, I got a few extra rooms I wanna rent out.
And so, part of the permit also requires the twenty-four-hour telephone number for emergency point of contact, because the corporation may have the, uh, that part of it to somebody else for, that, you know, that is upkeeping it and watching over it, so.
And essentially, just like if you were at a, at a hotel, they're required to provide you with a, an emergency point of contact, because what you have is you have individuals who are coming into town, who are going to these houses, and these residences that are using short-term rentals. They don't know the area, they don't know, you know, the, the local municipal, they don't know who to contact, that I got a plumbly in this house that I'm staying at for three days. They have to know those, that information so that, that it's available for them, uh, to be able to protect the, the renters as well.
Would this apply to someone, like, some people may do it, like, for events, once or twice or three or four times a year, maybe for major event? They have a little place, and they decide to do it for that event, what, what would that fall under? They are not doing it on a continuous basis, it's not, will this still be required to who this is?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're still doing it for business purposes.
Just like, if they did it just a couple days a year, or three, four times a year for major event?
Just like those who, you know, may have houses over by where the Cardinals play, and they, they will rent it out for the Super Bowl.
Yeah.
They're, they're doing it for a commercial purpose, so they would have to follow the, the registration requirements for it.
The state requires-
And you know that happens, like, in the, for the World Cup now in Qatar, what's gonna happen? A lot of people are gonna make a ton of money, so they're just gonna rent their house, I mean, that's their house, they're gonna go and live with their, uh, family members for three, four days, where they can make a few thousand dollars, and they just doing it for that. That's my question, so this will still apply?
Yeah.
And we couldn't, we couldn't exempt that, because then it would be a nightmare.
That's why I wanted to make sure this is clarified.
So, uh, besides the point of emergency contact, we have a valid transaction privilege tax, that they must have their TPT number, um, and show that in their permit process. Also, they must have a valid city business license.
May, I have, can I stop you and ask you one more question?
Yep.
The person that's doing it for those few days, he may not have gone and got a TP, uh, tax, uh, license. What, 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 what does this mean?
State statutory, yeah.
I know, then we need to make sure, will that be enforceable? I just wanted to clarify this. So, he does it for this day, he has to go, exactly, he has to go and get his license, and apply for a license, a business license, so he can do it for that few days.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna clarify.
That's a, that's a state statute that's just, we just put in, required to do. Um, does that mean somebody's not gonna do it?
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, of course, I just wanna make sure-
For those people who follow the rules-
Yeah.
Yes, when, even if you rent out your house for three days a year, you're required to have a TPT, uh, license, because you're required to pay taxes on it.
Okay.
And acknowledgement that the owner himself has not, is not a registered sex offender, or has been convicted of a felony act, and he resolved in death, that's another one of the state situations or cases, and that's, um, there is also a compliance with notification for the neighbors that comes in later, but that's one of the things that he, they have to swear to, uh, they have to show they have liability insurance, and that the vacation register, a rental was registered with Coach's family sister's office in the current way, which I went over there and got what it is. I actually looked up several of our vacation rentals, found out several of them are on the half-tax historic, which is absolutely not correct.
That's for owner occupied.
Only owner occupied, but the house was an owner occupied, they bought it, and they never changed the, the, so, it's time that some of these things, other ones are, 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 but there's three different, uh, um, numbers that you would fall under, which would be a four oh one, four, uh, oh four oh two, or a four ten. That's the, and it changes basically the secondary tax. It's still ten percent whether you're owner occupied or, or doing this, but it does change on the, they told me on the, uh, the secondary tax would change. Um, so, the questions I have about this particular set of, uh, would be, one, how are we gonna make sure that, that there's sewer and garbage bill? We wouldn't want to give a permit to somebody that owns a sewer and garbage light. Would that be because of the, we don't give a lot, a business license to somebody that has one, or is there a way we can?
Can you go into that?
No, but sewer and garbage is not connected to business license, it was a two-year.
So, it's not gonna- It would still be the separate issues, whereas i- if we're not paying the sewer or water, we have the ability to go through it and assess and, and name the property and, and shut them off.
Like, it wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want this in that, to say, you know, we're not gonna give you a permit unless you are paid up with the money you owe us?
So, well, it should be, they should be, because that's a can of worms that, there you don't pay, the regular, they're not gonna pay there. I do have a question, though, on sewer.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's-
Good question.
Give that some thought and see if it's, if it's-
Yeah.
If, uh, if we said, per, um, all-
No outstanding utilities or fees to the city.
Yeah. Okay, now you may ask a question.
So, my, I guess my question is, um, so, we're talking short terminals, which is a business, is that sewer and sewer or garbage now going to be charged like a business, like?
Because it's still a residential property, it'd be the same thing, if I was renting out my property, I'm, I'm doing that as a, as stuff to do TPT, and I, I'm still doing that as a, as a business. I could own ten properties for long-term rentals and still do it as a business, but I'm, I'm being charged the residential use, because that's what the usage is. The, the difference being that with a, with a commercial property, you've got people coming in all day long, you're generating different amounts and different types of, of garbage, and, for example, a, a restaurant, you've got your, your kitchen is constantly running, and you've got restaurants that are being used by hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals. You've got a substantially different, whereas if you have a short-term rental, does it matter that the same person who's flushing the toilet today is different from the person who's flushing it in two days? Or if that house was rented or lived in for a year, it, it's still essentially gonna be the same usage.
No, I was asking, because, because of differentiation, you know, when you're a long-term, this is residential, you know, and now it's become, you know, commercial, is it gonna be charged like a church?
But it is still considered a residential, because you're still governed by, you know, you, you can't just have a short-term rental and say, I'm gonna throw thirty people into this two-bedroom house.
Yeah, that was my next question.
It does happen, though.
So, that is my-
That is a foundering units on the top.
So, that is my next question, is under the Airbnb laws, now this is just Airbnb, this is encompassing all short-term rentals, they have a situation where you cannot rent any more than sixteen individuals. Is, was it ever considered the number of beds versus how many people could be in that house? Was that ever considered on the, I don't think the state-
I don't think the state addressed those issues, because, I mean, you, I think there's still typically, within city codes, you still have your, your code requirements for, for residential and stuff. I think we still have, uh, and we should have limitations where even if it is a, a, a long-term rental, you can't have thirty people in a two-bedroom house.
Right, well, okay, they could be, be, have a problem on the other side, but I know that's, they put that limit of sixteen, which still seems like a lot, but it's a lot of big houses and-
Well, as you said, you know, if you're talking about, you know, to Paradise Valley, a seven thousand square foot versus-
Mansion, houses.
Fifteen bedrooms, sixteen people's nothing, you know, but if you're talking a, a minor shack that has two bedrooms, it's, it's a different.
Another question.
It's just cozier.
Cozier.
Yeah, all right.
Just one who grew up in a family with eight children, I can tell you that ain't cozy by life.
So, this is the question that moves on to number C, which is the permit fee. We will have to put it into our fee schedule. So, I have a big red mark there that says, how much? How much are we gonna charge for this permit? And I asked our city clerk and finance director to ask other cities, and so, it's what I think we need to decide kind of tonight, what we wanna put in to the ordinance.
Well, and you don't necessarily have to decide tonight what that is, because what, what you may wanna do is, you, you want that fee to cover your costs.
Right.
Your administrative costs. What is it gonna cost for the city to administer this permit, to go, to do, you know, the, the city-
To enforce it.
To enforce it.
Mm-hmm.
So, those are the things, so, you, you'd want it to be in proportionate to what your administrative costs are gonna be, because if you just say, okay, we're gonna have a permit fee of two thousand dollars, then you're gonna have somebody come back and, and file suit saying, you know, that's, that's an unreasonable fee, that's not based off of, of anything, you're just trying to prohibit this type of use.
That's why I ask, kind of ahead of time, yeah, what opinions? My first thing is I need to know from the staff what they think the cost would be to cover this.
So, I did send out an email to our listserv after talking with Carrie, and it looks like the majority of cities are charging the two hundred and fifty dollars annual, or permit fee, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so what I will ask is for staff to sit down at staff meeting, see Carrie back there, and look and see, because there is a lot of requirements, this, this is gonna take a lot of staff time, at least to get it up and running, but, and then the renewes, renewals every year that will, can cover our costs, but we wanna keep it affordable, we, we're not in competition with Sedona or, or Paradise Valley. So, so, that's what I would like to consider, so that when this comes forth in, in two weeks, we can say, because once this, once that happens, we got two more weeks, then it's thirty days, it comes into effect, we need a fee schedule in place at that point, so, so that's where, that's where I'm coming from. You all agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, the one thing that, that, that shows up next on D is, is this is what's the onus, onus, and this, I think, comes from the state law, city shall issue or deny the permit within seven days.
Yes, that is a state statute requirement, that's something that we have to be careful over.
Right, so, I think- Right, so, I think what that brings me to is I'm gonna jump way far ahead. And if you go on to the next page under H, it says, "A vacation rental that fails to apply for a permit or license fee within thirty days of the permit application being made available by the city shall immediately cease operations." So, what I'm afraid of is, is we have a hundred and fifty, I just, you know, maybe more, maybe less. All of a sudden, thirty days, we've got to be processing all these within thirty days, and if we don't do it within seven days, they're, we're not in compliance. So, I'm wondering if, wouldn't it be wiser to maybe say sixty days so that, that we have a longer time period in order to, for people to?
Set it up and make sure everybody's on.
I don't know.
Can I pick that one up then?
Yeah. No, I'll wait till either sixty days.
Exactly, and ninety percent will do that. It's, it's the way. Uh, and, and that's the unfortunate fact, you give them sixty, they're gonna wait sixty.
I'm gonna wait fifty-five.
Right.
But I don't wanna pay two fifty today if I can pay two fifty in sixty days.
Alright. Alright, I just, I, I just thought of seven days, and I know that's part of what came out of those statements.
And it is, it's, it's gonna be that initial wave of, of, hopefully, that initial wave, you know. We don't see initial wave, then we know that there's non-compliance, and then we've gotta start the issue of notices and stuff like that for non-compliance.
So.
So, after we send them, uh, just to clarify this, so, once we identify these businesses, rentals, we send them, uh, the question is, do they have the existing Airbnb or short-term rentals? We're gonna ask them to apply, or we're gonna send them notices because we have identified some of them. How, how are we gonna start this? We're gonna say, well, everybody that has this business needs to apply. Do we need to go to them? They come to us. Uh, when do we start?
Maybe I can answer a little bit of that. I mean, we have a list now, um, people take out business licenses, um, we have, I think, a hundred, last time I checked, a hundred and ten or something. I don't know, those, and so, yes, I mean, to, the ones that we can notify, this is a new ordinance, it's gonna be coming in effect. We can set the date whenever we want as, as mayor council, and from this date, we have thirty days to apply. And, and then after that, we just have to let people that aren't really going under the radar or doing what else, um, aren't. Then, after those thirty days are up, then it's just a matter of, when we got time, you bring up one of the sites, whether it be Airbnb or one of the others, and you do not see that permit number listed because part of the requirements is that Disney City permit number must be shown on every advertising.
Okay.
So, you bring up this advertisement for an Airbnb and it doesn't say, "Disney permit zero zero five seven three", then you know they're not in compliance and they're, and they're not compliant.
And they'll be notified. We just said, okay, they need to apply, you need to get your order, uh, application.
And, and that's the goal, was the goal is just to, you know, initially make sure that people are aware and that they, they come in and they, they follow the process. You're going to get those people who just refuse to follow the process and you're gonna have to go through an enforcement, uh, procedure with them. But, you know, those who are doing it, you know, you send, we find out, like the mayor said, super easy because i- if they're doing a short-term rental, they're gonna have it advertised because otherwise they're not gonna get people in the.
That's true.
To, to their short-term rental, so you check those advertise, those main advertisement sites. If they're not in compliance, you just send them a notice. You need to become, you need to come in compliance within X number of days. Here's the information. Uh, if they don't do it, then you take the, the additional enforcement steps, but usually at that point, most people will come in and, and do it.
They wanna make, they wanna make money.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so, alright, so, I'm scratching my sixty days, man. I, I just, okay, uh, emergency point of contact, um, that, of course, would be something that I would, I'm asking mainly as for our police, if they show up, they have a problem. Somehow we'd have to have a database. I, I don't think it's a database that's out on Rule One Web, but we would have to be able to, to somehow.
Their emergency point of contact is required with their permit.
Yeah, but we, so, if it's two AM and the police officer needs to get a hold of somebody, they would have to have our database so that they could get that number.
Right, we can, we can provide that to, to PD once, once we have that established.
Okay, just, that's what.
Or you can also announce for that information posted inside the residence.
It has to be posted inside, it has to be both, but the, it, it is also part of it is that for emergency responses, that when requested by a police officer.
That one's a sixty minute, the other requirement's twenty-four hour.
The person has to be on the vacation rental premises or available by phone or text within sixty minutes.
Not, I mean, that, that doesn't happen to the people.
And that information is both part of the permit requirement, but it is also the, the, there is a posting requirement within the property itself within a certain distance from the, from the front door. Just like you'd see in every hotel room or back of the door, gives you a whole list of what you never read.
Questions? Can you stop them if you get, anyway. So, a whole list of, of prohibited uses, um, pretty standard, I think.
Well, I have a question about that.
Okay.
One more, it just says, I'm never, it just says obscenity. Um, is that one of those we don't understand situations or it just seems a little unclear?
Yeah, what's obscenity? Yeah, what's obscenity?
What, what are we talking about here?
I will look into that and see if we can better define o- o- obscenity because I.
You're, you're correct.
What maybe it seemed to me is not seen to.
Me.
No, obviously.
No, he's talking about Mel, maybe not.
Thank you for that one. Oh, yeah, blew right by that one.
Pretty good.
Good, good catch. Um, okay, moving on, trying to get there by seven. Eight, nine, six is neighborhood notification requirements. Um, I had a little change there based on our uniqueness where this is what is allowed. You have to notify everybody that tou- touches your property or somebody that's across the street. I added stairs because some of our streets are stairs and, uh, and that, you know, they, they have to be updated if you change ownership or whatever. This is another, something the state allows us to do now.
Allows us to do. It's not mandatory, but it's, it's good practice because that way the neighbors know that this is a, a short-term rental and they may start seeing. I didn't see that person last week. I see someone different this week, see someone different next week. They know this is a short.
And they'll have an I, an, a telephone number and somebody to contact.
Well, they know that, okay, this, this is a short-term rental. I know that they have to have a permit. If I have an issue, I go contact the city so I can get the contact information for the, for the, the record.
Well, actually, in the letter that they're notifying, you have to, they have to.
Yeah, they have to notify that too.
So they want, so your neighbor will already have that.
So, let me get, uh, on this, so, uh, whoever has this property has to go around the neighborhood and apply all the different neighbors.
Adjacent.
adjacent neighborhood.
To your right.
You wanna, yeah, she provided, uh, to each, to each single family residential adjacent, just so that they just, they want just right next to.
Touch it.
Yeah, touch it.
The property is hygiene and, you know, diagonally across the street or stairs.
Across the street too.
Across the street or stairs. So, if you've got a property that sits here, I've got two houses next to me. I gotta notify those and then I've got two houses across from me. I've gotta know. It's not a huge notification requirement. I don't think you. You gotta find more than five.
Three hundred feet, yeah.
Just take yourself these ways.
Yeah. Typically, you're looking at a notification for, for residences unless you have, you know, properties behind you. At, at the max, when you're probably looking at a total of.
It doesn't have to be personally. You can just leave a note. I mean, it would say, I, a letter, yeah.
Yeah, it provides the requirements of what has to be in that notification.
Okay.
So, it's not just a.
Oh, okay, not just.
You know, by the way, I've got a short-term rental next door. No, you have to provide the permit number, the address, the name and mailing address of the contact point, so.
The one thing I, the one thing I had a problem with when I saw that was they wouldn't have a permit number necessarily because they have to say that we had notified them all before they get their permit.
Yeah.
So, um.
Which I mean first, the check, you know.
Yeah.
You could have application, change it to application.
Yeah, let's do it.
And the, and the other reason for that is, is say, for example, you've got a short-term rental next door to you and somebody is there having a rage. And, you know, that, that's, again, I use Paradise Valley as an example because we represent Paradise Valley. They had substantial issues there where you had people who were going in and, hey, it only costs me, you know, thousand, two thousand dollars to rent this mansion for a night, but I can fit five hundred people in and have a huge party. Uh, and especially during, uh, this time, you know, the time of year where, where you have spring training, where you've got all these wealthy baseball players coming in. A lot of them are super young and super single and they're renting out these short-term rentals and turning them into big party houses. Not something that we're gonna have here, but it provides that information, notification for the neighbors in case there is an issue.
Scottsdale mayor told me his problem is, is, believe it or not, bachelor parties and.
Bachelor party, wedding, a whole bunch of.
The other ones that, yeah, so.
That's he, yeah, that's.
They're, they're coming there for, um, those reasons. Anyway, uh, the posting inside entry fee at primary, um, entrance, that's just standard, like you'd see in a motel, um, insurance. The, I would imagine if you had, ran a business, you'd insure it. Doesn't seem like that's a big deal. Not a big deal. Um, and then, uh, the, the background check requirement, so those sex offenders have been permitted to rent or occupy a vacation rental. Owners are allowed, who allow sex offenders against, shall be found in violation. Um, so, there was a question brought up to me that the background check on each guest and when they only get one name, how are they gonna know what, there could be five people there, they're not gonna know all five names, so.
Well, that's part, part of the booking process. You're supposed to, just, just like when you book, you're supposed to get information on all the guests, the names of all the guests that are, are going to be there.
I thought they already say four guests. They don't usually provide names, the ones I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Most of the, most of the big online ones do because they do their own, they do their own background checks, yeah. And that's why it says by the owner or by the online lodging marketplace, because it, it is a big issue in the industry. They, they want to make sure that they're protecting the, um, you know, their, their clients that are renting these places out. So, they have an obligation to the, the individuals that post it, because they're paying them a fee to use their marketplace to find these people to come in and to, to rent these places. And that's part of the, the cost of, of that fee is that they're doing the background check.
There's almost like a release sign up for your flight, you know, you have to list each, each person. It's how I had to do it, that's the story, so.
Yeah.
So, but we are not gonna get those. Those are gonna be retained by the owner of the property. I mean, we're not gonna buy unless we decide for some reason.
On a daily basis, that's just something that comes up if there is an enforcement issue, then we.
If our police show up and they run background checks and find this thing's got a problem, then it would fall back on the owner. Uh, I did ask and, and this is not necessary, and, and one reason I wanted the fire chief here was a safety inspection. I mean, I, I come from that background, so I always feel like there should be a smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector in the fire extinguisher. In any business, and this is a business, um, I will ask the chief back there, can you do a hundred and fifty of these in a, in, in thirty days? I mean, that's, we have to have these done within seven days or else we're in violation, so I know this could be a bit of a.
Well, it's, it's prior to use. We can issue the permit.
Yeah, okay, that's what I.
It's just prior to use, the owner shall obtain an initial safety inspection. So, we, we can still do the, you know, they come in, they, they pull the permit, we verify everything and then they say, okay, you're scheduled for your initial safety inspection on X date. They just cannot use it until that. So, that, that initial inspection is a part of that seven-day approval process. It's, uh, you know. And as we discussed, you know, one of the importances is because old Disney, you have properties that are a hundred years old that are not up to the same standards as you would have in, say, Scottsdale or even Queen Creek or other municipalities where you don't have those issues. So, you wanna make sure because if you got people who are staying in these, these older houses, you know, do they have proper ingress, egress, you know, do the windows work? You know, those things that, you know, a lot of us take for granted, um, that may not function in a, in a very old.
Right, and give you a lot on fire and then it's usually two more next to you.
So, you have to protect. Just a, a safety issue concern, um. Um, I mean, that, that permit fee would also cover the cost of that initial inspection.
So, we would have, uh, we'd have to go back on the existing properties that do have, uh, business license. Still, we still have to go make sure to comply with everything else we just mentioned, just want to clarify this.
Yes, because there's, even, even those that, that currently have a business license and operate as a short-term rental, there are new guidelines and requirements under this code.
So, we'll have to go back.
That would require additional information and things, so they would have to go back and, and, and bring their current operation up to the standards. And this is taken from, you know, what the state statute was passed that allowed municipalities to do, you know, just in an effort to, to better regulate these circumstances where you do have a, a residential home that's being used on a, a more frequent basis as a, a very short-term rental.
So, just on the whole permit amount issue, um, under our current codes for a, uh, business license for vacation rentals, seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents a year. If normally a fire original new business would be a seventy-five dollar fee, so that needs to be factored in by stat in the overall amount we're gonna charge for the permit because it would include that, sort of a separate fee, so you don't have to pay twice. So, figuring the seventy-five for the fire and then whatever else in order to maintain the, or to, to handle the paperwork and so on, so that's. Um, I'm done with all my little yellow marks. How about anybody else? Do we, are we comfortable bringing this back and we'll, it looks like there's just a couple of issues we got, we wanna have a look at in the next two weeks. The worst, which was a good catch, and, and also some recommendations on the amounts for, for the, uh, and also my question about sewer and garbage.
Number of individuals in the unit.
Yeah, that's it.
Outside of, so, those pieces and stuff. So, there's a few things that I've got on notes, we should be able to have those addressed and back to back.
Okay, great. Um, I asked for a motion to, um, in this, uh.
Adjourn the work session?
Yeah.
Move to adjourn the work session.
Second.
A motion, the second to adjourn this work session, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poes nay, ayes have it. And we're gonna take a short break before we jump right into the bigger thing, so if anybody's on board, I'm a fan, we'll start a few minutes after.